Let's get started. This session is on labour manpower development and retirement protection. I'll first invite Mr. Chris Sun, Secretary for Labour and Welfare, to give us a briefing. Members who would like to speak, please press the Request to Speak button. Mr. Chris Sun, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members. Recurrent government spending on labour and manpower development in 2024 to 25 is $3,350 million, representing an increase of $514 million or 19.4% over the revised estimate of $2,810 million last year. It accounts for 0.6% of the total recurrent government expenditure. I'd like to brief you on the work that we do. On the reemployment allowance pilot scheme, it is a scheme to encourage people to rejoin the workforce. The scheme will last for three years. For those who have not been at paid employment for three consecutive months or more, and they are aged 40 or above, they can join the scheme. Each eligible person will receive a maximum allowance of $20,000 during the implementation of the scheme. The estimated expenditure for reemployment allowance is $120 million, which is expected to benefit some 6,000 persons. The second point I want to cover is about the continuous contract requirement. The Labour Advisory Board has reached a consensus on the review of the continuous contract requirement, which is known as the 418 requirement. Such a requirement will be relaxed by using the aggregate working hours of four weeks as accounting unit and setting the four-week working hour threshold at 68 hours. We have commenced the relevant legislative amendment work. On the abolition of mandatory provident fund offsetting arrangement, next year on the 1st of May, we will start implementing the abolition of the MPF offsetting arrangement. We are now working on the IT system for the government subsidy scheme, and we're formulating its operational details. Also, the Labour Department has commissioned the Census and Statistics Departments to conduct a thematic household survey to collect information on the working situation of local digital platform workers, and we plan to collect the views of these workers with the formulation of strategies for protecting these workers. On enhancing occupational safety and health, or OSH, the Labour Department is highly concerned about the recent fatal work accidents. Apart from commencing immediate onsite investigations, issuing suspension notices to the relevant duty holders, and ascertaining the legal liability of duty holders concerned, we also have launched a series of follow-up actions having regarded the nature of the accidents. We've also set up special task forces to combat unsafe work activities. The Labour Department is revising the Code of Practice for bamboo scaffolding safety, which involves enhancing the stability of bamboo scaffolds and requiring bamboo scaffolders to possess valid safety training certificates before carrying out the relevant work. The newly revised COP has been gazetted today. On the other hand, to enhance the safety and the health protection for workers in confined spaces, we'll revise the relevant COP following stakeholder consultations. It is expected to complete the revision exercise in the first half of this year. The Labour Department is going to extend the pilot program to cover the pilot rehabilitation program for employees injured at work to cover the catering and hotel industry and the transportation and logistics industry, starting from next month, hoping to benefit more injured employees. On talent attraction, starting from the end of 2022, the government has implemented various talent attraction schemes. At the end of March this year, around 110,000 talents have arrived in Hong Kong through various admission schemes. At the end of March this year, we received over 77,000 applications under the Top Talent Pass scheme, and we've approved nearly 62,000 of them. While there is no requirement for the scheme entrants to be employed in the first two years, many of them have already been working in Hong Kong. We last year conducted follow-up surveys with the scheme entrants who have arrived in Hong Kong, and we find that 54% of the talents who have arrived in Hong Kong have been in employment, taking up primarily managerial and professional posts with median monthly employment earnings of about $50,000. Around 25% of the talents have monthly employment earnings of $100,000 or above. These are obviously higher than the local median monthly employment earnings of $20,000. In addition, 16% of the incoming talents' spouses have already taken up employment, and most of them are engaged in high-skilled jobs. These survey findings show that the arrival of the scheme talents and their spouses bring about direct economic contribution to Hong Kong. Besides, more than half of them are aged under 40, and many of them settle in Hong Kong with their young children. They will add new impetus to the local labour force and bring about positive impact on Hong Kong's demographic structure. We'll review the Top Talent Pass scheme and other enhanced arrangements of talent admission to ensure the competitiveness of the measures and their effectiveness in addressing local manpower demands. To alleviate the manpower shortage in skilled trades, the government decided to launch the Vocational Professional Admission Scheme. Starting from year 2024-25 admission cohort, non-local students of designated full-time professional higher diploma programs of the VTC can apply for staying in Hong Kong for one year after graduation under the scheme to seek jobs relevant to their disciplines. The scheme will be piloted for two years. And at the end of last year, the Hong Kong Talent Engage was established. It provides support and organizes activities for incoming talents to attract global talents with diverse backgrounds to come and settle in Hong Kong. On the 7th and 8th of May this year, we'll organize the Global Talent Summit Hong Kong to promote Hong Kong's unique advantages as an international talent hub and entrance, and enhance talent mobility and cooperation among cities in the GBA. We've issued invitations to honourable members to welcome you all to join the summit. This February, the Employees Retraining Board increased the maximum monthly retraining allowance to $8,000 to encourage more unemployed and job seekers to enroll in training and enter the employment market. The ERB has also launched the One-Stop Training and Employment Scheme, and it's actively promoting the scheme to employers and recruiting trainees. And it is conducting a comprehensive review on the service target, scope, and so on, and it will submit a report to the government by Q3 this year. To encourage more young people to join the apprenticeship scheme and join the relevant trades, each registered apprentice for a period of three years starting from 2024 to 25 will be provided with an additional training allowance of $1,000 per month, and graduated apprentices will be subsidized to undertake upskilling courses of relevant trades. Meanwhile, VTC receives a pension to organize short in-service training courses to meet the market demand. The LWB is conducting the manpower projection to assess the manpower requirements and shortages for key industries driving Hong Kong's economic growth and essential services supporting the city's operation in 2028. Sectoral consultations have largely been completed. We're consolidating data and information from various sources. It is expected that we'll be able to promulgate a detailed early report next year. Chairman, this concludes my opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Sun. We have about 90 minutes left. About 90 members have pressed the button to speak. They should all have time to speak. Mr. Tang Fei, Ms. Carmen Khan, Lam Chuen Sing, Dr. Johnny Ng, Mr. Shanghai Long, Mr. Michael Lee, Dr. Wendy Hong, Mr. Kenneth Lo, Mr. Chu Kwok Kung, Mr. Kingsley Wong, Mr. Michael Lu, Mr. Per Yu, Mr. Chow Shu Chong, Ms. Dorian Kong, Ms. Lillian Kwok, Dr. So Cheung Wing, Dr. Frankie Yen, and Mr. Kwak Wai Kung have pressed the button. Mr. Tang Fei, thank you. I'd like to follow up on 1063. I'd like to thank the Bureau for giving very detailed information. The answers exceed my expectation. Yesterday, the Census and Statistics Department released some figures about different employment schemes. Q1 2024, the total employment population compared to 2023 to 2024, the total size reduced by 6,300, but the total working population increases by 3,100. How do you assess such figures? Is it that some people have quit the job market? Are these people in need of help? Or they just quit for no reasons? Do the talent admission schemes result in a higher unemployment rate? Mr. Sun, the total labour force fluctuates every quarter, but the figures remain more or less the same. Every quarter, we see some fluctuation in the figures. It's hard for us to explain why we see a few thousand-person increase of the labour workforce or labour size every quarter, because there are many different factors that contribute to the change in numbers. We have the talent admission schemes. We see a recovery in our economy, and all these will help enlarge our labour workforce. But the total working population has to do with the aging population. 2018 saw the peak of the working population. We saw some ups and downs, but we saw the peak in 2018. Next, Ms. Carmen Khan, I have two questions. In his opening remark, the secretary mentioned about the abolition of the MPF offsetting arrangement, and the arrangement will be implemented starting from the 1st of May next year. Can the secretary confirm that the date of commencement of the arrangement will not be affected by the delay of the launch of the EMPF platform? The government is now working on the IT system for the government subsidy scheme. Government departments, including the Registration and Electoral Office as well as some public organizations, have seen failure of their computing systems. We're going to see a digital policy office. Will such office or OGCIO help carry out pressure tests to ensure the safety of our computing system? My next question is about 082, about Top Talent Pass scheme. We see that the scheme has yielded results. For instance, 54% of the incoming talents who have arrived in Hong Kong have been in employment, and they are taking up jobs with median monthly employment earnings of about $50,000. Also, a lot of the spouses have already taken up employment, and also 5% of them are living in self-owned properties. So we can see that these incoming talents are settling in Hong Kong on a long-term basis. 90% of the incoming talents under the scheme come from the mainland. Do you have any schemes that target overseas talents? In 2023-24, there are 10 staff members working for the scheme, and for 2024-25, there will be 15 of them. Does that mean the government is confident about the scheme? That's why you're adding more manpower to the scheme? I declare that I am the supervisor of the relevant committee.
Two questions, Secretary, about abolition of the offsetting mechanism. I emphasize once again that the abolition of the offsetting arrangement is not packed to the launch of the EMPF platform prepared by the MPA Authority. So these are two separate matters. Meanwhile, the government will honor its promise. We are going to roll out a government subsidy scheme with a horizon of 20 years so that employers will reimburse the severance payments made, and that is why we need to develop an information technology system that can help with the calculations. We've sought funding approval from the Finance Committee, and we are developing this system. Let me reassure members that we will ensure that this system will run smoothly with zero risk, so to speak. We need this IT system to work to support the whole idea. So we'll work with OGO and we'll follow all the additional tests required so that this system will run as it is intended to provide subsidy for employers under the abolition arrangement. The other question relates to the Top Talent Pass scheme. This scheme, TTPS, has been warmly received, and we're confident. In the past 10 months or so, we've received some very positive response, and we will conduct a review two years down the road according to plan, and by then, we will see whether this scheme will be further improved. On a separate note, we also like to mount overseas publicity. In fact, we've received applications from overseas, only that the applications coming from the mainland are even larger in number, and that is why we will tweak the scheme and extend the publicity so that more overseas talents will come to Hong Kong via the TTPS. Mr. Lam Chuen Sing, question number 014, about supplementary labour scheme. After relaxing the job types to 26 under the ESOS, some 33,000 applications have been received, 4,000 of which have been approved. Now, against a backdrop of full employment in Hong Kong, if employers run into difficulties in recruitment, they can apply for imported labour. But according to the report announced yesterday, the unemployment rate edged up slightly by 0.1% to 3%, and 9,400 more people in our population are out of jobs. They tend to be in particular sectors such as retail, catering, construction. And I understand that there are some workers currently looking for employment. Now, according to the ESOS, you will consider the sincerity of employers in recruiting manpower. So priority should be given to the jobless, especially the recently jobless. Some employers say that they have very relaxed requirements. As long as you can breathe and you can work, you will get hired. In light of that, especially the rise in unemployment figures, will you enhance job matching for the employers so that priority will be given to those who have recently become unemployed? Because we don't want to see a rise in the number of imported labour under ESOS whilst the unemployment figures locally are also on the rise. The other question is on 015, about inspecting construction sites. Now, Secretary mentioned that the Code of Practice on Bamboo Scaffolding Safety has just been gazetted today, and there are requirements in relation to the equipment, and only trained personnel can handle the work. So my question is on whether you will step up inspection according to the revised Code of Practice to ensure that contractors will abide by the revised code? For example, will special task forces be set up to conduct more inspections? And will you target large-scale bamboo scaffolding since they don't affect construction sites only, but pedestrians as well? Secretary, on the ESOS, as well as the labour importation scheme for the three specific sectors, we accord priority to local employment. This is a very clear requirement that should be observed. Now, for the ESOS, after submitting an application, the employer should at least try to recruit local manpower for four weeks so that priority will be given to local employees in the four-week period. This requirement is clear. We also asked the LAB to make referrals. We follow up on these cases very stringently. That means we ask the prospective employees why they've turned down the job, and that is how the mechanism works. But it is understandable that sometimes those jobless may not wish to take up a particular job. And anyway, we can enhance job matching and improve the mechanism. On site safety, I will defer to Deputy Director Mr. Fong. After promulgating the revised Code of Practice, we need to follow up on a number of things. For example, we need to disseminate information to different parties. This can be done through the website and the app. The information will be updated. We also revamp the training materials, and all the training organizations concerned will update their materials accordingly. On publicity and inspection, there'll be strengthened efforts so that all trade associations and parties involved in erecting bamboo scaffolding will be aware of the revised code. So on top of strengthened publicity, we'll also step up inspection. And during inspection and visits, we remind the parties concerned to abide by the latest Code of Practice. Dr. Johnny Ng, I'd like to follow up on 101 and 102. These are questions submitted by Mr. Andrew Lam. The first question relates to the Top Talent Pass scheme. I see that the figures are really encouraging. Some 91,000 people have come to Hong Kong through different talent admission schemes, so you are meeting the target. And I am looking at the breakdown in the table, and I'd like to focus on two particular sectors, that is biotechnology. Under the General Employment Policy and Tech Test, there are talents coming from these sectors. Under Tech Test is 21, 24. Under General Employment Policy, also some, but not many. A few years ago, you introduced the new listing rules 18A, and since then, some 50 major companies have applied for listing in Hong Kong, totaling $100 billion worth of market capitalization. So why is it that we're still short of hands? For information, technology, or cybersecurity, I see that we've only admitted one talent from this sector due to, well, we have a number of incidents recently. Will you consider admitting more from the sector? And for the Global Talent Summit, you're going to spend about $12 million. What will be the form of the summit? Will booths be set up? And will companies be paying to rent the booths and hide their own hands? Two questions, Secretary. About the Global Talent Summit, Mr. Anthony, now Director of Hong Kong Talent Engage, can take the second question. Now, on the first question, the member asked two specific questions on biotechnology and cybersecurity. Let me first turn to GEP, General Employment Policy and ASMTP for admitting mainland talents and tech tests. There are three different admission schemes with a breakdown of talents from different sectors. Whereas for the QMAS or TTPS, we don't have a breakdown of the sectors where these talents come from. So the number from these, number of people from these sectors may be more than listed here. For the majority of talents coming under TTPS and QMAS, these are talent-based admission schemes. We don't differentiate between different sectors or job types. So there may be incoming talents from these sectors as well. But perhaps in future surveys, we can ask for more information so that we can give the member the information he needs. Mr. Lau?
Between the 7th and 8th of May this year, we will hold the Global Talent Summit. There are three parts. On the 7th of May, the International Talent Forum will be held. On the 8th, we will hold a conference called the Greater Bay Area High Quality Talent Development Conference. And on both 7th and 8th of May, we will hold another event called Career Connect Expo. So for the forum and the conference, about 1,000 talents and stakeholders from different places have been invited to attend. As for the Career Connect Expo, booths will be set up. Our partners will be using these booths. We don't charge them anything. Next, Mr. Shanghai Long.
Thank you, Chairman. I need to declare that I am the founding president of the Top Talent Pass Scheme Association. Secretary and Talent Engage Hong Kong have worked very hard in attracting talents to come to Hong Kong, and I really appreciate that. I have three questions. Secretary just now mentioned that the TTPS will be reviewed in the middle of this year. Let me give you my take. And I beg to differ. The Top Talent Pass scheme is a two-year scheme that will allow talents to see if they are suited to the lifestyle in Hong Kong and for them to get a job, et cetera. So the ideal time for the review should be in the middle of 2025 or towards the end of 2025 so that the talents can have the whole stretch of the two-year period to consider whether they adapt well to the environment in Hong Kong. The other question is about the 2,991 applications received as in February 2024. And in 2023, 6,266 applications were received. And by contrast, the application figure in 2024 is much lower. Don't blame it on the Chinese New Year, because in 2023, it was also around Chinese New Year, and you received 6,000 applications. And the third question is about Category A talents under TTPS. For those earning $5 million of annual salary under TTPS, the number stood at 2,162. And for those earning $10 million, 1,926.3, for those earning $3 million a year, 5,100 of them. So what are the plans of the Hong Kong Talent Engage to further promote talent attraction? Secretary?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Shang. Please don't be mistaken. The review has nothing to do with the talents can stay here for two years or not. We've implemented the two-year requirement, and rest assured, these talents can stay in Hong Kong for up to two years. We're not going to change the operational details. The review seeks to improve the scheme because the scheme was set up some two years ago. So we're looking at whether there are areas of improvement. So rest assured. The other question relates to a drop in application figure as of February this year. Well, it is because of the Chinese New Year effect. Well, the member said otherwise, but last year, the scheme was just introduced. So it was a hype. Within a short period of time, we received an exponential increase of applications. But the figures have come down to a steady level some six months after its introduction. So this is within our expectation. It shows that the TTPS...
It shows that the T T P S is popular. We don't want to see large fluctuations in application figures either. Because it shows that after all, Hong Kong is attractive to talents. Now, for high-income earners in category A, there is no education qualification requirement. They account for some twenty percent of all applicants under T T P S, and we are encouraged. And the category A applicants come from different places.
Mister Michael Lee, I want to follow up on O two O about the Enhanced Supplementary Labor Scheme and the Labor Importation Scheme. We have seen economic recovery since the COVID pandemic. We need a lot of manpower to take up um different vacancies. In reply number O two O, the number of imported workers reached thirty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-two. This is a figure from last year. But this accounts for eleven point two percent of the number of imported workers approved. For um retail accommodation and um food services, only three point three percent of the applications were approved. For accommodation services, one percent. And for food and beverage services, only three percent. All these industries have to do with our tourism and people's livelihood. How come these applications are approved in a very slow pace? A lot of people told me that they lack staff and manpower. Some restaurants told me that they've been waiting for their applications to be approved for a long time. You mentioned that you will add twelve um labor officers to deal with the applications. But can you tell us clearly, how long do the applicants have to wait for uh the applications to be approved? Well, in twenty-twenty-three, the applications approved only account for eleven point two percent of all um imported workers applied for. My second question is about O three four. On foreign domestic helpers, the middle class has been complaining about job hopping of um foreign domestic helpers. Some employment agencies may induce foreign domestic helpers um to job hop, especially uh those that are of a smaller scale. Can you clearly prevent employment agencies with licenses to not induce foreign domestic helpers? And ID four oh seven E form, perhaps you can collect information from foreign domestic helpers to prevent the problem of job hopping. Secretary, the first question is about um labor importation. I mentioned in reply to an oral question that since the fourth of September this year, we have rolled out the Enhanced um Supplementary Labor Scheme. We need more time to review how we can optimize the entire procedure. We have already put in place measures to ensure smooth implementation of the scheme. In Q two this year, we believe we can process about eleven thousand eight hundred eighty-six applications um for importing workers. This means that in the coming three months, well, of course, the applicants will have to first um go through their recruitment exercises. And if they can prove that there are difficulties with recruitment, we will um start approving the applications. So we will see whether we'll see an increase um of applications. If we get all the documents and paperwork required, we can complete the approval process in three months' time. In the past, we saw that applicat- applicants were not familiar with the procedure, and they did not um submit all the documents required. Now, we have come up with a list of a hundred and fifty posts that um um very commonly seen for such applications. If you stick to this kind of list and standard forms, um, then we will ensure smooth implementation or approval process. We encourage employers to use these forms and lists. And the other question is about job hopping of um foreign domestic helpers. The Immigration Department and the Labor Department have been working hand in hand. For whatever reason, if a foreign domestic helper has to terminate hi- uh his or her contract uh prematurely, for instance, if the helper got mistreated and uh was treated or was treated unfairly, then of course she would be allowed to do so. But if there isn't a reason for her to terminate the contract, then we ask the helper to leave Hong Kong. We ask helpers to tell the Immigration Department why they have to change jobs. Mister Michael Lee, I hope um the government can make use of um available resources to prevent employment agencies from inducing foreign domestic helpers to change jobs.
Yes, Director. We are working on a code of practice for employment agencies. And in the code of practice, we clearly specify that employment agencies are not allowed to uh induce foreign domestic helpers through monetary awards to job hop. Doctor Wendy Hong.
I think we need to see some reforms from the government's side. My question is about old eight-seven. The government provided some figures. We are seeing a very low labor force participation rate in Hong Kong in twenty-twenty-three. The participation rate is fifty-five point one percent, which is lower than the seventy percent in Singapore and eighteen percent, sixty-eight percent in the mainland. By twenty-thirty-two, the participation rate will drop to fifty-three point two percent. For the twenty percent of the families in Hong Kong that got the lowest income, uh, three of four households, they don't work at all. For those who are at the age of um taking up jobs, they may not be employed. Over forty percent of the household families, well, they do not take up jobs, but at the same time, they have no family commitments. This has to do with the design of our welfare system. If you lie a flat, you will get a social welfare or benefits. If you work hard, you will not get any benefits. I asked about C S S A. We have uh two hundred seventy-four thousand people on C S S A and only fifteen thousand people uh on the Self Reliability Scheme. And only twenty-two point five percent of them got out of C S S A after joining the Self Reliant Scheme. We need to offer support to the underprivileged. However, for able-bodied job seekers or able-bodied people, we should encourage them to take up jobs. We don't want them to rely on the social welfare benefits.
Secretary. I thank Doctor Wendy Hong for the questions. I have previously talked to Doctor Hong on this topic. For those who are receiving social welfare benefits, say for C S S A recipients, if they are able-bodied adults, we of course encourage them to rely on themselves. If however, they have worked hard and they cannot get out of the poverty net, um, they have to rely on the government. Say a single mom, she may have to take care of her children and cannot go to work. We want to adopt a targeted approach when we uh try to eradicate po- for poverty. We've met with parents who have to take care of their children. Children usually um finish school at three or four P M. And we want to help um the parents to look for a job. I just want to say that a lot of um people who are receiving social welfare benefits, they are single parents. So there are people who need our support. As for the uh labor force participation rate, due to aging population, we expect that the participation rate will continue to drop. This is going to be the trend. I have talked to Doctor Hong about this and a report published by the Legislative Council. Some two hundred thousand people, they are not elderly people, but they do not take up jobs. And most of them are women who are aged about fifty, and they are not very educated. They have worked for their entire life already. They are in their fifties, and they think that they should take a break. So these are the people that we are talking about who are not taking up jobs. Mister Kenneth Loong. My first question is about O four one on the working holiday schemes. According to the government's reply, the government is currently collaborating with thirteen um economies to roll out working holiday schemes. We have two thousand young people from Hong Kong to join the working holiday ske- holiday scheme. And we've attracted eight hundred young people to come to Hong Kong under the same scheme. Do you have any publicity campaigns to attract more overseas young people to come to Hong Kong to work through the scheme? Currently, four out of the thirteen uh economies that work, we worked with are from Belt and Road countries. In the future, will the government take the initiative to discuss with Belt and Road countries to expand the working holiday schemes? The other question is about one-one-O. It is about the Vocational Professional Admission Scheme. In the coming two years, for those who enroll in full-time V T C programs, they will be able to stay in Hong Kong to work after they have completed the programs. Over the past three years, only about one to six people are non-local students enrolling in this kind of programs. I want to know if the current publicity uh campaigns are effective. How are you going to spend the four million dollars you get a year? Will you promote this admission scheme to overseas students? Thank you. Secretary, I thank Mister Kenneth Loong for the questions. The first one is about our working holiday schemes. For uh countries that we work with under the scheme, well, we launch our own promotional campaigns. Say for a country with which we have signed an agreement, they launched their own promotional campaign to tell their people about the working holidays, holiday scheme in Hong Kong. Of course, when the government officials, they um are on their duty visits, of course, they will help promote the schemes. As to whether we can sign agreements with more Belt and Road countr- countries, we will uh look into that. We have to factor in different things when we decide whether to sign such agreements with Belt and Road countries. If we think that the, it is suitable for us to sign such an agreement, of course, we'll do it. We want to expand the working holiday schemes to more Belt and Road countries too. On the Vocational Professional Admission Scheme, well, Mister Loong asked why there were so few students enrolling in the scheme. We lack a mutual recognition framework with uh the mainland. For mainland students who enroll in uh V T C programs, when they return to the mainland, it is not recognized. For those uh who would like to stay in Hong Kong to work after completing the high diploma programs, we want to attract these students. We expect that there will be one thousand of such students um who will join the scheme. Thank you.
Next, Mister Ju Gok-haung. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask questions on one-two-O and one-two uh one. That is about the V P A S. Just now, another member asked about the discrepancy in the estimates. Why is it that um you expect to have one thousand applicants, but you only received less than a hundred? What is the basis of your estimate? The V T C runs dormitory in Tsing Yi and Park Fu Lam with limited places. This pilot arrangement will be reviewed after two years. And how do you cater for the accommodation needs of two thousand non-local students? If this need is not even met, then it is very hard to keep them in Hong Kong after graduation for them to work here. Well, as explained just now, in the past, the V P A D qualification was not recognized by the mainland. Now, the purpose of the scheme is different. We will retain these graduates after they take up studies in Hong Kong. They will remain in the trades that they have received the training. And we're confident, we have actually contacted the relevant mainland institutions. Students have expressed interest to come. This is not uh an easy path for them. Because for Chinese students, they study in the mainland using Chinese in the medium, as the medium of instruction. Whereas in Hong Kong, many courses are taught in English. So they are studying really hard in order to make sure that they meet the English proficiency requirement. The V T C will also help in looking for accommodation for the non-local students. So you made a valid point. But upon graduation, these students will need to work out a plan with the employers. It's not the responsibility of the V T C. Mister Kenzie Wong, I have a question on one-three-eight. I agree that uh the talent admission schemes will help attract quality talents. For example, under the T T P S, the applicant should either earn over one, uh two point five million dollars a year, or they should graduate from the top one hundred universities. Now, we're talking about a total number of forty-five thousand under the T T P S, so that constitutes half of all the incoming talents, nine, ninety-one thousand of them. Some twenty thousand talents coming in and working in the biotechnology sector earning twenty thousand dollars. So um I don't think this is a correct label for the so-called talents, or perhaps we don't have the correct understanding of what is meant by talent. Would you consider providing a clear definition of what talent means? Say, use a yardstick with a minimum income of twenty thousand dollars? Academic research in education, arts and culture, business uh uh business support in human resources and financial services. These are mostly the sectors where the talents come from. I want to know whether there is an overlap because many young people study uh these subjects in Hong Kong as well. I want to know whether the talent admission schemes will affect the um employment prospect of local youths.
Secretary. We have two talent admission schemes that are employment-oriented, that is G E P and A S M T P. These, uh, some of them are allowed to stay for a longer period of time, say twelve months, and some only several weeks. Um, we understand that some of these talents have taken up short-term jobs. In our future surveys, we will strive to provide a more detailed breakdown of the data. So short-term jobs account for the figures that are presented here. Of course, we strive to help meet the demand. That means we need to work with universities, post-secondary education. That means we need to work with universities, post-secondary education. And meanwhile, young people can further their studies through the C E F and through our adult education programs. Our priority is for local youths to gain employment. About the seven types of talents, is there a minimum threshold based on income? Say, a talent should be earning at least twenty, thirty thousand dollars a month so as to differentiate talents from imported labor. Will there be a minimum requirement on, say, minimum income as well as education qualifications? For talents, we usually mean those having a university degree, earning a pay that is packed to market rates. But I want to stress that a university graduate may not earn, may not essentially earn more than a non-university graduate. A construction worker may earn more than a university graduate. In fact, for the, some blue-collar jobs, the pays are even higher. Mr. Lu Chong-hung. L W B bracket L O two. That's a question put by Ms. Perry Yu about the pilot rehabilitation program for employees injured at work. The aim of this pilot program is very good. During the golden period of rehabilitation, employees injured at work will be given a better treatment and this can help them fully recover and return to the workplace sooner. But I have these questions. On the dollar sign. For the first phase up to twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, the total expenditure was seventy-nine million dollars. However, for the healthcare, I mean expenditure on rehabilitation treatment services, it stood at twenty-two point three million dollars. So that's less than fifty percent. The majority of expenses were on administration. And upon extension or expansion of the program, the estimated expenditure on rehab will go up to some forty-two percent. Will there be measures to further lower the management costs to make it more cost-effective? What if there is a surge of applications? Will there be sufficient money to cover them? Because on average, each case took nine hours. How many interviews were involved? Would there be counseling provided? And about the participation rate, let's say if a worker has been injured at work, would he first go through the traditional route or would he be referred to the pilot rehabilitation program? Do you have the relevant percentages? Three questions on the same answer. Well, I think we all understand that there are fixed costs in order to keep the pilot program up and running at the initial period. So this is very clear. We're now expanding the pilot program to cover two more industries to encourage voluntary participation by more workers. The feature of this pilot program is that it is entirely voluntary. We cannot compel any employees to take part in it. Although in our view, this is the golden program because you will be able to get the best treatment and best services during the golden period of rehabilitation. But for various reasons, some employees injured at work would rather queue up for public service and we cannot force them to join us. What about the percentage of the participation rate? Deputy Commissioner, do you have the figures? Dr. Wen. For construction workers eligible for the pilot rehabilitation program for employees injured at work, the participation rate was twenty-one percent. Like Secretary said, this is so-called the golden program. So with this low participation rate, I think more should be done to publicize the program. You need to explain to workers that we seek to help them recover as quickly as possible because there may be concerns that you might be depriving the worker of the entitled sick leave days to make them go back to work sooner because the participation rate of twenty-one percent is really on the low side. I share your view. I would like to make a joint effort to extend our publicity of the program. Because of the effectiveness, we'd like to encourage more workers to join it. Next, Mr. Yu Pak-lu.
Chairman, I need to take the secretary to task about the V P A S. Mr. Kenneth Lo asked a question on one one oh and I'd like to ask a follow-up question. I don't know why the V P A S does not include hospitality and tourism subjects. You should review the scheme as quickly as possible because the enrollment deadline for V T C was the twenty-ninth of February. Secretary, do you have any idea how many applications have been received under the vocational professional submission scheme? And while we're at it, can you please tell me when you're going to include subjects such as hospitality and tourism? And I have another question on supplementary labor scheme. I share the question of Mr. Peter Shil, that is reply number oh six one. In September twenty twenty-three, you implemented the E S L S and three thousand two hundred and forty-six applications were received seeking to import thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-one workers and four thousand and ten workers were imported. That's about eleven percent. According to this reply, you do not keep statistics on the imported workers who have arrived in Hong Kong. Does it mean that the imported workers so approved have not arrived, not even a single one of them out of the four thousand and ten? Because as I understand and as I've received the most up-to-date information, not even a single important worker out of the four thousand and one approved has arrived. So there is a misconception in the community that our workforce is replenished with the imported workers. So my question is, exactly how many imported workers so approved have come to Hong Kong and started work? Do you have these statistics? Because otherwise, it's really not palatable. Because you answered Mr. Peter Shil's question with the figures as at the twenty-ninth of February and it's been a few months since its introduction and eight months since implementing the E S L S, not a single worker has come. Secretary.
The work of the Labor Department is to approve the applications or quotas under the E S L S. Well, for the hotel sector, I think this is an issue close to the heart. Let me reassure you that apart from the approved applications in the coming three months, we will be able to process all the applications relating to hotels. We're talking about some one thousand applications. So we surely will be able to process them. Now, after approving the applications, it's for the employers to liaise with the relevant employment agencies in another jurisdiction to arrange for the imported workers to come to Hong Kong. We've given the green light, but it still takes time for the imported worker to actually arrive in Hong Kong and work here. My understanding is that there are important workers working for different sectors at the moment. We don't have figures at hand because we don't ask employers to report to us, but on a regular basis, we can collect statistics.
The other question is about vocational professional admission scheme. I understand Mr. Perry Yu's concern. As I said, after we've rolled out the scheme for one year, we will review whether there is room for us to adjust the programs. As at the situation with the applications that we've received as at February this year, we'll provide the relevant information after the meeting. Mr. Chow Shiu-chung, I have two questions. The first one is about oh one five, about the special task forces set up by the Labor Department. The Labor Department acted quickly with regard to the frequent industrial accidents and three months of inspections were conducted towards the end of last year. Have you assessed the effectiveness of your inspections? And would you consider spending three months' time every year to conduct inspections? Would you ask the special task forces to carry out such inspections? My other questions are about oh eight oh, oh seven two, oh seven five and oh nine five. The first one is about Top Talent Pass Scheme for twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. There are just about ten staff, but we've got seventy thousand applications under the scheme. Some media reports mentioned that there are people who sell false or fake education qualifications online. While you approve these applications under the scheme, have you double-checked or do random checks to verify their education qualifications? According to the government, last November, a survey was conducted showing that fifty-four percent of the Top Talent Pass Scheme talents came to Hong Kong and hired employment. At the same time, forty-six percent of the incoming talents who have arrived in Hong Kong have yet to secure a job and this is a very high percentage. Does the government have an idea of whether these people who have yet to secure a job have left Hong Kong after they have got the visa or the Hong Kong I D card? If that's the case, then that would defeat the purpose of implementing the Top Talent Pass Scheme. All right, two major questions. Secretary, I thank Mr. Chow Shiu-chung for the questions. Let me answer the last question first. We conducted the survey last year and the results of the surveys are encouraging because it shows that over half of the incoming talents who came through the Top Talent Pass Scheme have already found a job. What about the remaining incoming talents? Well, they told us that they want to come to Hong Kong, they plan to come to Hong Kong and they plan to look for a job. They have got the visa through the scheme, so they do want to come to Hong Kong. But the challenge is that they have to secure a job within two years' time and the job has to be in line with the sector they are in. And we are strict with the scheme and the requirements we impose are very clear. We have used various means, for instance, through the online platforms to attract talents. So we don't actually have to process lots of applications. In terms of how we verify the data on the application forms, I defer to Ms. Kwan to tell you more.
Deputy Secretary, please. On the verification of document work submitted by, through the Top Talent Pass Scheme, say the Immigration Department will receive documents submitted through the scheme and on a risk-based approach, the Immigration Department will check the certificates submitted. If there are questions from the Immigration Department, they will check with the applicants and ask them to provide supplementary information, including school report cards or transcripts from schools. On the other hand, we, through the Immigration Department, to write to the issuing institutions to verify the information. So sometimes we check directly with applicants or we ask a third party to help verify the information or we check directly with the issuing institutions. We adopt the same approach for other admission schemes like the quality migrant admission schemes. What about the effectiveness of the special task forces set up by the Labor Department? I thank Mr. Chow for the questions. We conduct inspections through the special task forces and also through other means. We put in a lot of resources to carry out inspections by special task forces. We also hold surprise checks or random inspections. And we have yielded results through these surprise checks as to whether we will ask the special task forces to carry out more inspections in the future, we will look into it. My question, Ms. Doring-kong, my question is about apprenticeship scheme on oh nine one. For the eighteen designated trades, from seven thousand people in twenty twenty-three dropped to some eight hundred and twenty-one, representing a high percentage of decrease. And twenty-six hundred registered apprentices. For non-designated trades as well as designated trades in Hong Kong, we have a total of thirty-four hundred apprentices. We have a drop of some thirty percent of apprentices in Hong Kong. The government may tell me that for designated trades, they have now become non-designated trades. So we have seen a significant drop for designated trades. Now, if we look at non-designated trades, I see a significant drop for some trades, including aircraft maintenance mechanic two, the figure dropped from twenty-six to sixteen. And for assistant dispenser, we saw a drop from eleven to six. And for engineering or appliance services, leveler, we saw a drop from twenty to one. How come we are facing so many difficulties to attract apprentices to join all these trades? I raised a few examples from the non-designated trades. We saw a significant drop in the number of apprentices. Does that mean these trades do not need apprentices? Also, would there be a possibility that in ten years' time, we will no longer see technicians who can fix air conditioners, for instance? We cannot look for apprentices from these trades from the mainland. How can we rectify this? After I've looked at the table here, I'm scared that we may not have any more air conditioning technicians. On V P A T, I have read a logical paper. The money we spent accounts for zero point one percent of our G D P. For Germany is zero point three percent, for Singapore is zero point three percent. We need different types of talents in Hong Kong. Have you thought about how we can boost the number of registered apprentices so we have enough skilled workers or technicians? Would you work with the business sector like the practice they adopt in Germany? Thank you. Secretary.
From a macro perspective, we need talents for different trades. The difficulty we are facing is that we are seeing a declining population or declining workforce. So a lot of young people, they may not want to join these trades as apprentices. So this year, we will increase the allowance for apprentices by one thousand dollars. We're going to step up training for apprentices. If they join the designated training courses, we will give them more allowances. We want to step up allowance for them and also training for them. As mentioned in my opening remarks, we are carrying out a manpower projection and the projection will apply up to twenty twenty-eight. We'll see how much manpower we are lacking. And one of the focus is to see how much manpower we are lacking for all these trades. And we will share the information when the results are ready. After we've conducted the analysis, we will share with the community our views and how we're going to address the manpower shortages. I believe I've answered the questions, Chairman.
Right, I think you have more or less covered the question asked by Ms. Dorian Kong. Ms. Lillian Kwok, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on O nine-three and O nine-five about the talent admission schemes. You said that you will allocate ninety million dollars to the Talent Engage, and forty-two million dollars will be on salary cost, and the rest of the money will be on publicity campaign. So forty-eight million dollars will be reserved for promotional campaigns and publicity work. My question is, how are you going to assess the effectiveness? And with forty-eight million dollars, what do you think you can achieve? My second question is about the Top Talent Pass Scheme. I want to ask about the list of universities under the scheme. We are relaxing the threshold to attract more talents from the mainland. You mentioned that you refer to the QS ranking when you review the list. Now, most of the talents are from financial services, INT, and so on. But we lack, for instance, engineers in the Greater Bay Area. For instance, we have the Polytechnic University, which is ranked fourth for the food programs, and it is ranked a hundred, top hundred around the world. We need different types of talents in Hong Kong. How are you going to relax the threshold as you attract talents through the Top Talent Pass Scheme? Will you review the list of universities under the scheme to help replenish talents in Hong Kong? Secretary, on the Top Talent Pass Scheme for the university list, we have referred to the four university lists that are recognized around the world. I agree with Ms. Kwok said that apart from talents from the financial services trade, we also need INT talents. So we need talents from the science stream. We introduced three mainland universities to the list in the last round of review of the Top Talent Pass Scheme. And these universities are ranked top ten in the mainland. One is famous for the science programs, and the other one is from Harbin. And there is the other one, that's the Jiaotong University. We'll see how we can make use of the Top Talent Pass Scheme so that we can attract more talents from the science stream to come to Hong Kong. The other question is about our promotional campaign launched by the Hong Kong Talent Engage. On our promotional campaign, apart from online campaigns, we have reserved funding to promote Hong Kong with ETOs overseas. And we target markets in Southeast Asia. We also target European countries. On online promotional efforts, we have received some twenty-one million dollars. And for promotional campaigns overseas and in the mainland, we will earmark about eight million dollars. For supporting talents in Hong Kong, we will hold seminars. And such costs will be about three to four million dollars. This year, we are going to hold the Global Summit, which is going to cost about twelve million dollars. How are you going to assess the effectiveness?
I'm sorry, because I see that there are fifty activities covered by the forty-eight million dollars. So I'd like to know the estimates for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. On cost-effectiveness, be it website, social media platforms, hit rates, et cetera, we have the relevant indicators. For websites, for example, we achieved two point three million hits last year, and we expect the number to go up to six million. As for social media platforms, we previously ran two of them, that is WeChat and LinkedIn. And this year, in order to extend our publicity to overseas markets, we are going to run five social media platforms. As for the exposure rate, we achieved eight million hits last year. This year, with more resources, we expect the hit rates to go up to twenty-five million. Next, Dr. So Chongming.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on the questions that I've submitted, LWB one-two-six. I thank the administration for giving me a very detailed reply. They spent a page and a half explaining the answer to me. I now understand the efforts made by the administration in relation to the Top Talent Pass Scheme and other areas. I'm not going to repeat what others have said. Safe to say that fifty-four percent of incoming talents have been in employment to Hong Kong, in Hong Kong. And I don't know whether the administration has looked into the other half of the applicants, why they are not yet in employment. Because for the Talent Engage online platform, there is a dashboard. And in real time, I know that there are eight thousand vacancies available. Secretary, now you mentioned that you know that they're actively seeking jobs. There are so many job application—I mean, job vacancies available. My question is whether you have any thoughts on helping these incoming talents settle in Hong Kong and get a job? And perhaps you can review the demand for talents as well? Because it's only right for your bureau to look into it. The next question is O one-seven. According to LWBL O one-seven, the administration has cited figures in relation to inspections of construction sites from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. On average, the offenders were fined five to seven thousand dollars. Well, I can't help but think about fire safety. I think there is a prevailing problem here. There is a lack of deterrence, be it industrial safety or safety at construction site. The fines only range from five to seven thousand dollars. Is there sufficient deterrence? I'd like the administration to think about it. About imported workers, I have another question. Are these imported construction workers adapting well to our safety standards? Any update? Well, Dr. So spent three minutes on these questions. So you can just pick one of these questions to answer, and then you can supplement the rest in writing. Commissioner can take the question on site safety. Now, about penalties and prosecution, let me also take these questions. Yes, also on labor or occupational safety in general. We'll continue to take a multi-pronged approach in inspecting construction sites. Now, the member asked about our inspection effort. We will carry out surprise visits, and we will also focus on larger construction sites with higher risks. And on the issue of penalty, we've had views before that for major construction site incidents, the financial penalties were on the low side. And that is why last year, the bill was passed. For very serious offenses incurring apparently liability of negligence, then we have raised the penalty to a maximum of ten million dollars. The bill has just been passed. It will take some time for the new legislation to take effect. In fact, for the recent cases, we will discuss with the Department of Justice on the basis of this new piece of legislation so that the new levels of penalty can come into effect, and by then, we will achieve deterrence. Right, please supplement the other answer in writing, Mr. Yan Man Yu. Chairman, I have a follow-up question on O five-six. About job easy vacancy search terminals, VSTs. The VSTs are usually installed in government buildings. There may be a number of them on a particular floor of the Labor Department, and then another floor, the Social Welfare Department, et cetera. Now, the terminals are not expensive, but perhaps you should review the overall layout and see whether you can optimize the use. And there are also computer terminals at the Labor Department offices. In fact, these computers can carry out the same function as the terminals. So perhaps you should rethink whether we should install so many VSTs in a government building. Commissioner, Ms. Chan?
I note Ms. Tang's comments on vacancy search terminals, job easy. Well, but when we conduct visits, we hear something different from the community. Some job seekers tell us that they prefer the VSTs because of their ease of use, and they can easily allow job seekers to choose the job vacancies they like, and the their preferences can be easily matched, and they can also get a printout from the terminals. So we have received some positive views on the job easy VSTs. About quite a large number of VSTs installed. Well, we did install more VSTs within a short period of time due to the requests. But since there are already VSTs in the service centers or in the government buildings, we can review whether it is necessary to install so many of them in a single building. Perhaps we can take away some of them. Or maybe when the time comes, when VSTs are approaching their end of service life, we can gradually phase them out. And by then, perhaps we can develop a mobile app and then review whether there is a need to replace as many VSTs.
Mr. Quo Wei-Leng, I have a question on O O-two. That's a question from Mr. Chan Pu-Leng on a pilot rehabilitation program for employees injured at work. Some members expressed concern about the usage rates of thirty percent, and that's on the low side. This pilot program will run for three years. According to the government estimates, three hundred million dollars will be set aside over a three-year period for five thousand quotas. And so far, less than one-fifth has been used. Although you're going to expand the pilot program to cover catering, hotel industry, and transportation and logistics industry, are you sure that the five thousand service quotas were used up? And if you receive fewer than five thousand applications, will you still use up three hundred million dollars? Or will you release the unused resources? The other question is on L O-two-three. That's a question from me on occupational safety and health. My question is, when the CDM, Construction Design and Management, will be introduced? Or whether you will make reference to the Mainland System of Concurrent Implementation of Design-Building Commission? According to the administration's reply, it is for the bidder of the tender to explain the relevant occupational safety and health measures. Now, on the last bit, I have this concern. The Labor Department is also represented in the Task Force on Construction Design for Safety set up by the Construction Industry Council. And the task force will explore the introduction of pilots and formulate promotion strategies, et cetera. But I don't see a timetable here. Right, two questions. Dr. Wen can take the first question on pilot rehabilitation program. Yes, for the pilot rehabilitation program for employees injured at work, very soon, we're going to expand the program. So there will be more applicants. With more participants, the costs will also go up. So the actual expenditure is expected to rise because of the rehabilitation services and also the administrative cost of case management. The actual expenditure will be determined on the basis of the number of participants and the services they need. Deputy Commissioner Feng can take the next question on O two-three. Deputy Commissioner, Mr. Vincent Feng, on the second row. About design for safety, this is now a requirement for public works contracts. So contractors will need to observe this requirement. We also encourage other contractors to implement design for safety. Now, in fact, we're working with the Construction Industry Council. The consultancy report under the CIC has been completed, and they have formed some preliminary views. As the next step, they will take forward the pilot projects. And I understand that the CIC is now discussing suitable locations for the pilot projects. Three more members would like to speak, Mr. Dennis Lam, Ms. Lam So-Wai, and Ms. Yuenis Yong. This meeting will be adjourned after the three members have spoken. Mr. Dennis Lam.
Reply one-three-four, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on this question from Dr. Tichy Yun about the talent admission schemes. Well, I think the administration has given an answer to the questions. Then I'm looking at the figures. For example, general employment policy and the region from where the talents come. For others, the number of persons stand at nine thousand two hundred and forty-nine. So total number is twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventy. One-third of these talents come from the so-called others region. Will the administration give us more information for analysis? And about the breakdown by industry or sector, likewise, under the category others, some ten thousand four hundred and fifty-eight. likewise, under the category "others," some 10,458 persons. So that accounts for 40% of the total. I want to know the so-called "others" category. What sectors exactly are they in? As for the remuneration, total 26,270. For those earning below $20,000 a month, that's 40%, 12,233 of them. So despite calling them talents, they earn such a meager income because this bracket is capped at $20,000. How low are we talking about? Are we talking about $6,000, $7,000 a month? Are they cheap labor? The breakdown is too simple. Can you tell us more about the sectors or industries they're in and the relevant levels of income for these people? So that we have a better picture of the talent admission schemes. The second question is about the dependents arriving in Hong Kong. 78,000 dependents joined, the 91,000 applicants coming to Hong Kong. Some are spouses, some are children. Would the government give us information on the number of children as dependents studying in public schools in Hong Kong? So it's to address the problem facing the education sector now.
Three questions about the Top Talent Pass Scheme or the Talent Admission Schemes. Thank you, Chairman. I will provide supplementary information about the other countries or other trades. Well, what is the lowest salary for the incoming talents? Well, we don't have the relevant information at hand. Again, I don't have the relevant information about the dependents of the incoming talents. After the meeting, we will provide information about how many of these dependents are children and how many of them are spouses of the incoming talents. Ms. Connie Lam, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask about 031. It's a question from myself about the Greater Bay Area Youth Employment Scheme. According to the government, there will be there are 632 young people who have completed the scheme, but only 464 of them continued to be employed by the relevant enterprises. So where did the 168 young people go? Did they stay in the Greater Bay Area, or did they return to Hong Kong for work? I want to know if the youth employment scheme is helping our young people. Also, according to the government, about 1,000 applications were received, and after 18 months, only 632 people stayed in the scheme. 459 of them did not complete the program. Is it because the jobs were not suitable for them? Well, some people I know went to the Greater Bay Area to work in golf courses. Is it because the jobs they got did not match their needs? Can we offer more support to them in terms of their career planning? Also, will the government adjust or review the length of the scheme and the matching services provided through the scheme to our young people? Now, some of our young people, they managed to secure managerial position in the government under the elite system. But some of them, they opt for the VPAT stream, and they want to seek work experience in the Greater Bay Area. We want to make this scheme attractive. Let me see if Ms. Jade Wong, Assistant Commissioner for Labor, can tell you more. Thank you, Ms. Wong.
We got 1,091 young people who secured a job, and for those who completed the 18-month program, there were 632 of them. The average time of employment for these 1,000-some young people is 14.2 months. So they have worked for over a year in the Greater Bay Area under the scheme. On job matching, well, currently, the scheme provides a platform for employers to put up job vacancies, and young people can apply for these jobs. And it is up to employers to select the employees they want. According to the scheme, the employer will have to offer a salary of $18,000 per month to the young people they employ. And these young people, they are mostly taking up a job such as managerial positions. Chairman, how do we attract young people in Hong Kong to work and live in the Greater Bay Area? How can we help them to adapt to life there? I think, Secretary, you have to do more. You have to make the scheme more attractive. I really know young people who went to the Greater Bay Area to work as golf caddies. We have a very famous golf course in Shenzhen. However, the jobs offered are not caddies. The posts offered are managerial positions. One person who joined the scheme became an influencer. Apart from those who meet the requirements to join youth employment scheme, well, how can we help those who did not attain the university qualification? We have different schemes and support for our young people. For those who want to seek job experience in the Greater Bay Area, we'll definitely offer help. Ms. Yoonas Young.
The first question is about 001. In 2023, 1,400-some employment agencies were in Hong Kong. And in 2023, the government got 267 complaints. Some of the complaints are about inducing foreign domestic helpers to change jobs. I see that the prosecution number is low, however, and there are no prosecutions against employment agency inducing foreign domestic helpers to job hop. I wonder if the existing legislations do not apply to employment agencies that induce foreign domestic helpers to job hop. I want to know how the Labor Department is tackling the problem about job hopping. The other question is about 014 on supplementary labor scheme. There were 3,000 security guards being applied for, but only five of them were approved. And for cleaners, there were some 2,100 applications, but only nine were approved. I see that the application procedure is quite complex. For instance, the government has to assess whether there's a genuine need for the employers to recruit such workers. And also, you ask the Labor Advisory Board to provide advice. I want to know if it is because the application procedure is too complex. That's why many applications were not approved. The other question is about 015. I see that the government is trying to make use of technology to ensure construction site safety. However, I don't think the government is making use of technologies such as AI to monitor site safety. Would you consider making use of AI, for instance, to ensure that contractors and other parties in the sector to comply with the relevant safety requirements? Secretary.
On the enhanced supplementary labor scheme, the figures provided was up to 29th of February. We got lots of applications. Both the government and the applicants may not fully be familiar with the application procedure. However, now we've rationalized the procedure. As mentioned, in the coming three months, we'll be able to handle 11,000 applications, covering applications for recruiting security guards and cleaners. In the past, employers were not familiar with the application procedure, for instance, how they could apply for security guard licenses. Now, they are quite aware of how to complete the application. On job hopping, perhaps my colleague can tell you more. Mr. Feng first. Thank you, Chairman. Both Labor Department and other government departments are keen on using technologies to reduce industrial accidents. To give you some examples, last month, the Labor Department and the OSH Council co-organized a conference and/or an event to brief the sector about what kind of devices, for instance, the sector can make use of to enhance site safety. CIC is also doing the relevant promotional work. Last year, the Development Bureau wrote out the 4S Systems, which is known as the Smart Site Safety System, to enhance construction site safety.
Yes, Ms. Chan on job hopping.
We have a mechanism with the Immigration Department. We are in close liaison with the Immigration Department. For complaints that involve suspected job hopping, we share such information with the Immigration Department. And on confirmed cases, the Immigration Department takes enforcement action strangely. They will stop approving such foreign domestic helpers involved to work in Hong Kong. So we have yielded results in this regard. Moving forward, we will revise the Code of Practice for employment agencies. In the revised COP, we will specify clearly that employment agencies are not allowed to induce foreign domestic helpers to terminate their contracts prematurely through financial means. And this is going to help regulate our employment agencies. That's all for the meeting today. In order to examine the estimate of expenditure for 2024 and 25, we held eight sessions. For the 2024 to 2025 Appropriation Bill, the second reading will resume at the council meeting on the 24th of April. Thank you.